Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, November 8th, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 10th, 2020, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 29th, 2020, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 29th, 2020, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and a decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the chairman opens up the hearing for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you can press *9 to raise or lower your hand, and *6 to mute and unmute yourself. Mr. Cantor. Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Moretti.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe is absent tonight. Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Stanton? Is absent. Mr. Gonzalez? Is absent. And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
To the republic.
We stand.
One nation, united. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Restless.
Where's Jen?
Yep.
She does not get up for that.
Swearing in the professionals, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Troply, would you mind swearing in the professionals?
Not at all.
And put on your unmuted, Jen.
I'm good now.
All right. Do you swear testimony or give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self of God?
I do.
I do.
Right. The record should reflect this evening. We have Mr. Aguirre, Ms. Bean, Ms. Spiro, and Mr. Conliffe all sworn for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Troply. I appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you.
Prove the minutes.
There are no minutes to approve this evening.
Vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
Your correspondence?
I have an email from Donald DeCasse asking that the board carry his application from tonight's agenda to December 6th, 2021 meeting with no further notice.
It is...
What application is it?
It's BA 2120. Construct a single-family dwelling with deceptive. That's to December 6th. Okay, if anybody in the audience is here for case number BA 2120, Daniel Decase. This case is going to be carried to December 6th with no further notice at 7:00. PM.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Aguirre has his hand raised.
Yes, or Mr. Aguirre?
Oh, I do not.
He doesn't have it raised. Was, but it's not anymore.
Okay, your correspondence?
Yes, we also have a letter from Christopher Hanlon, attorney for Robert Liskowski, asking that their application be carried to December 13th, 2021 with no further notice. He also granted an extension of time for the board to act to January 31st, 2022.
What about? I have a question for you real quick. Do Casey, did they need an extension of time?
Uh...
Well, who did you...
He granted an extension of time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, got it. Okay, case. Case number BA 2106, Robert Liskowski, is going to be carried to December 13th with no further notice, 7 o'clock. And there has been an extension of time granted. Okay. That it?
Um, I have some more. The board secretary also sent a draft list of meeting dates for the next year for the agenda. She would like everyone to review it and be ready to comment on the dates at the next meeting, which is November 22nd, 2021. Um, there's also a reminder about the Rules Committee, that they'll be having the Rules Committee meeting on Monday, November 29th, 2021, at the Ivy League at 6:00 PM. That is all the correspondence for tonight.
Uh, also, uh, did she mention anything about bringing the... Everybody needs to start thinking about the live meetings?
Mr. Chairman, I did speak with Ms. Robano today regarding that, and I think it'd be a good idea for the board to think about it and take a poll. I don't know, we may not want to do it this evening, but, um, as you know, Mr. Chair, many places are opening up, many boards are opening up, the council, in fact, and Howell is live. So we've had that discussion. I think it will depend on the comfort level of the board members, more than anything else.
Well, is there... What I want to know is there... This is not for discussion tonight, but, you know, just some information that I would like to know, is there any type of COVID protocol that's going to be done?
Well, I would think it would be much like a courtroom where there's six feet of separation and everyone wearing masks. Other than that, I, you know, I don't know whether or not there's any barriers or anything in the council chambers at this point. But, I mean, it's something to think about. We certainly don't have to decide it tonight, but we will have to decide it for notice purposes moving forward. So perhaps the thing to do, Mr. Chair, is for us to talk about it, and perhaps just we can poll the members at the next meeting, if you wish.
I just ask real quickly, um, I know we've noticed out, so what time or frame are we looking at to possibly do this?
First meeting in January.
January. Very good. Thank you.
Three more meetings.
Okay, so we'll finish this year this way, and then we're going to consider for next. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Anything else, Eileen?
That is all for tonight.
Okay, moving forward. It will be so nice getting back into the meeting. Okay, case before the board, case number BA 2117, New Jersey Solar 2000 LLC, use variance preliminary final major site plan with bulk variances. Application of New Jersey... Oh.
Here we have some resolutions, Mr. Chair.
Right.
Wait, wait, you haven't. Okay. Okay, I am kind of messed up here.
Right, there were two resolutions on the agenda.
That's all. I'm just starting to read that case.
That's okay.
Okay, uh, resolution BA 1709, A-2 Fairfield Industrial Park LLC. Resolution granting use variance approval, eligible voters Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Roscoe, Seiya, Gonzalez, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
Mertens.
Mertens.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. Seiya.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next resolution BA 2109, New Jersey American Water Company, resolution granting amended preliminary final major site plan with bulk variances, eligible voters Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Roscoe, Seiya, Gonzalez, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Moretti. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Anybody? Hughes, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. Seiya.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, thank you. Now we're back to the case. Case before the board, case number BA 2117, New Jersey Solar 2000 LLC, use variance preliminary final major site plan with bulk variances. Application of New Jersey American Water Company. Is that correct? Eileen? That's what kind of threw me off with the resolutions. I'm sorry. Uh, New Jersey American Water Company is applicant owner amended preliminary. See that?
Mr. Chair, no, that's not it.
Not correct.
It's application for a New Jersey Solar 2000 LLC as applicant, and Joseph Beanstock Living Trust as owner, seeking use variance and preliminary final major site plan approval to construct nine-acre solar voltaic farm consisting of one solar array, two concrete pads for equipment, seven feet high, black vinyl coated chain link perimeter security fence with gate and associated 20-foot wide gravel access drive on lot 114.
Right.
That's, that's what the application is for.
Okay, uh, so the New Jersey water, the applicant is not New Jersey water?
No, that we just did the resolution for.
No, no, but my description, it says, application of New Jersey...
Yeah, that's not correct. It's not correct.
Right. Actually, the applicant is NJ Solar 2000 LLC, so you need to strike NJ American Water Company and simply replace it with NJ Solar 2000. The owner is, as Jen said, the Joseph Beanstock Living Trust.
Okay. Everything else on there is correct, yeah. Ron?
Yes, sir.
Do me a favor, just read this in, into the record, please.
What, the entire description?
Please.
Because, yeah, it's not, I'm looking at it, and, you know, Charlie underscore 2 is a description, it's calling it the application of New Jersey American Water Company as applicant. We need to fix that.
Yeah, Mr. Troply, you mind reading this into?
No, no, that's fine. So I will amend the first line of the sentence, which has said, "New Jersey American Water Company will replace it as follows: Application of NJ Solar 2000 LLC as applicant." Actually, the owner is Joseph Beanstock Living Trust, so that needs to be amended as well. Seeking amended preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary bulk variance relief.
No, no.
That's what it says.
I understand that, but that's not correct. They need a use variance and preliminary. I don't know what you guys are reading off of, because the agenda I have has a totally different description. They need a...
Well, let's go back to the...
And preliminary and final.
Right. They need to... Actually, Mr. Chair, the description in the... The agenda is long. Jen was reading it in, and she read it correctly from her letter.
Correct.
Jennifer, would you mind reading?
No problem.
Please.
So, again, applicant, application of New Jersey Solar 2000 LLC as applicant, Joseph Beanstock Living Trust as owner, seeking use variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a 9.01-acre solar voltaic farm consisting of one solar array, two concrete pads for equipment, seven-foot-high black vinyl coated chain link perimeter security fence with gate, and associated 12, 20-foot-wide gravel access drive on lot 114. Additional associated site improvements include two stalwart infiltration basins with grass swales, and supplementing and widening the existing dirt gravel access drive located on lots 129, 120, 137, and 138, to a minimum width of 12 feet for access to the proposed solar farm facility from Casino Drive. Additional electric utility improvements are proposed along existing driveway to connect proposed solar farm facility to JCPN electric grid network on Casino Drive on premises known as block 144, lots 114, 129, 130, 137, and 138, 663 Casino Drive.
And Mr. Chair, just to clarify also, that's the description that's posted on the township website. I think what was being read was a prior draft copy of it. So that's what Jen just read is what's on the township website currently.
Eileen sent out a corrected agenda, so I'm not sure if everybody got that, but she did send it out.
Okay, I did not get it then.
I did not get it either. Okay, so we're good now.
We're good. And the expiration date is February 25th, 2022.
Correct.
Good. Okay. Mr. Mr. F...
Ferczar.
Uh... Welcome aboard. Now that we got it all straightened out, I think.
Thank you. Thank you. Apologize for the confusion. I had caught the error when Eileen had sent out the initial version of the agenda, and I sent her corrections, and I guess the corrected agenda didn't make it to all board members, so I hope everything is straight now. My name is Stephen Ferczar. I'm from the firm of Greenbaum, Rose, Smith &amp; Davis, and I represent the applicant, New Jersey NJ Solar LLC. This is regarding a property located at 663 Casino Drive on block 144, lot 114, with an access drive through additional lots 129, 130, 137, and 138. The combined property is approximately 40 acres and is currently used for residences and farmland. The project improvements will primarily be on lot 114, and the other lots are included for driveway improvements. The lots will continue to be separate lots and will not be considered. The property is primarily in the ARE-2 agricultural rural estate zone with a sliver of the property of the HD1 highway development zone, but the project improvements will only be in the ARE-2 zone. We are seeking approval of a solar energy generation facility, which is permitted as a conditional use in the ARE-2 zone pursuant to ordinance section 188.69.1B3D. We were seeking approval of a variance from the condition that requires a minimum lot area of 65 acres when we are proposing the solar energy facility on a 40-acre tract. The project will provide a solar photovoltaic farm on approximately 10-acre portion of lot 114 with a solar panel array, two concrete pads for equipment, a security fence and gate, as well as a gravel access road through all of the lots. The project complies with all bulk requirements for setbacks, but we are seeking design waivers from a few ordinance requirements relating to all of the provisions of an environmental impact report, a waiver from the requirements of section 188-132 for curbs and sidewalks, and for private walkway on the property, a waiver from the section 188-106F with respect to lot width, with respect to width and materials for the driveway on the project, and a waiver from certain submission requirements for lighting, siding, striping, and traffic signal as they're not applicable for this limited project. We will present the testimony of Sam Bailey, a representative of the applicant, Robert Lyons, a licensed professional engineer, and Joseph Stanley, a licensed professional plant. We've submitted to Eileen an affidavit of service along with affidavit of publication and all the documentation necessary to establish our compliance with the statutory notice requirements, and I would ask for the board attorney to confirm that the board has jurisdiction to proceed.
So noted.
Mr. Chair, I just want to note it for the record that our office, in our letter dated January of 2021, also indicated that although they're not proposing development in the HD1 zone, it's part of the overall project, this is not a permitted use in that zone, and therefore a D1 variance is required. So it's not simply a D3 variance, it's a D1 variance as well. And I will ask, is that, you know, I know that Mr. Stanley is a PEPP. Is he an AICP? Because this board traditionally requires all use variance testimony to be given by an AICP.
I don't know. It's just, I think Mr. Stanley has to raise his hand to...
Why don't we bring everybody in, all of your witnesses in?
Let me swirl the witnesses in first, and then we can have a conversation afterward. Then, let's see, can we bring them in, Eileen?
Yes, they're joining the meeting.
Thanks.
I can't see them on my iPad. Are they in?
Um, yeah, they're all coming in. There's Mr. Bailey, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Stanley is there.
Okay. All right. Folks, would you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony that you'll give tonight?
Ron, Mr. Lyons needs to turn his camera on.
Oh, I can't see him first of all, so. Mr. Lyons, if you can hear us, turn your camera on.
Yes, got him.
Okay. Mr. Chair, everyone is ready? So we'll swear everyone in, and raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you'll give tonight. It'll be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, the help of God. Mr. Bailey, may we have your... Well, first of all, everyone swears to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self to God, correct?
Yes.
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey, may we have your full name for the record?
Sam Dennison Bailey.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons, please.
You're...
We can't hear you.
No, still can't.
Phone is off.
I have to go out and come back in. This is the, I call it the Zoom vortex, where sometimes people's audio just doesn't come with them, so I would suggest...
Not a perfect, not a perfect science. Mr. Stanley?
Yes, my full name is Joseph G. Stanley, and with Mot McDonald, and our office address is 412 Mount Kemble Avenue, Suite G22, in Morristown, New Jersey.
Mr. Lyons, you might have to log off and then come back in. Give him a few seconds to come back in. Nope. Still no, no. Mike? Eileen?
Got to be something on his end.
I think it's something on his end.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe if you could attempt to raise his volume?
Mr. Lyons, is your volume up?
Mike, what about the protocol to call in?
Mr. Chair, though, if he's giving sworn testimony, we have to be able to see him.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
Maybe if you could try from a cell phone?
Mr. Lyons, can you call in? Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion, please? We have Mr. Bailey here. Certainly, I'm not going to advise Mr. Ferczar how to try the case. I'm sure that he can proceed with at least one witness, planner being the last witness, if we get to that point.
Well, Mr. Stanley, Mr. Stanley is the planner, not Mr. Lyons, so...
That's right. I know that, but I'm saying, Mr. Bailey is not, and, you know, if he's going to talk about the process and the, um, the application, that's fine, just to get started, rather than waiting for nothing right now.
Yeah, we can start with Mr. Bailey while Mr. Lyons figures out. We figure out how to get Mr. Lyons on.
Well, before we do that, let's answer Jennifer's question real quick, as far as...
Yeah, so we do not accept testimony on a D1 or any use variance application from a non-AICP planner. That's been the board's practice for several years now, so I'm not sure, um, if Mr. Stanley is an AICP, but seeing as he's a PE, I would tend to doubt it. So I would ask if he's an AICP, and if not, we may want to just go through the engineering and then carry to another hearing to wait for you to produce an AICP, especially considering this is a D1 use variance.
Uh, yes, I am not an AICP member, and I've been a professional planner since '85 and testified in planning matters all across the state numerous...
I understand that, but we have, we have frequent fire engineers that have their planning license that we don't accept testimony from, that...
Where is this provided?
I'm providing it to you right now.
And, no, but where else is this provided other than your statement?
It's been the board's practice for over two years, so if you were familiar with the board's practice, you would know. I understand you're not typically before the board, but that has been the board's practice, and we have had many engineers come with a PP over the years that we do not accept on use variance applications.
Correct. Okay, let us proceed with Mr. Bailey. And we hope we can get Mr. Lyons to log in. We hope we can get Mr. Lyons to log in.
Okay.
So, Mr. Lyons, if you can hear me, try going in on another computer or on an iPhone or something so that we can get through your testimony tonight. Okay. Mr. Bailey?
Okay, I just want to say for Mr. Lyons, if you're calling in, to press star nine to raise or lower your hand.
Does he have the phone number?
Do you have the phone number?
Okay, he is pointing to a phone.
I think we can hear him now. No, I saw this thing light up, this window.
Yeah. Yep, I'm dialing that number.
The number is plus one, three, one, two, six, two, six, six, seven, nine, nine. Then press star nine to raise or lower your hand.
Hello? Hello? Can anybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Wendell.
Yeah, I, I just lost my, my whole thing and it rebooted.
These Zoom meetings do not go without flaws.
Well, I'll tell you what, we have had pretty good luck most of the time. Really have. I don't know what it is. I guess the stars are in the wrong place tonight. Does Mr. Lyons have a, do you have a cable that you can plug into your computer with the earphones or something?
Well, that's a decent idea.
Let's go ahead and start with Mr. Bailey and then, Eileen, keep trying to get Mr. Lyons into the meeting, please.
I will.
Thank you. Mr. Fisk? Will you move forward, Mr. Bailey?
All right, Mr. Bailey, can you provide your name and address?
Yes, my name is Sam Bailey. Our company resides at 501 Boilson Street, Boston, Massachusetts, 02116. I'm the development manager for the project in question here for Lightstar Renewables, which is ultimately the parent company for New Jersey Solar 2000 LLC.
And how long have you been involved with the company?
I joined Lightstar in March of 2021, so that is roughly eight months.
Okay, and can you describe the business that Lightstar has engaged in?
Lightstar Renewables is a renewable energy asset development company that primarily focuses on the development of community solar projects. Historically, that work has been done in the Northeast, but ultimately we operate across the US. These projects, in terms of scale, are anywhere between 1 megawatt DC to 5 megawatts DC.
Okay, and what's the megawatts proposed for this project?
This project is proposed at 4.1 megawatts DC.
And where does Lightstar currently operate? Throughout the country?
Currently, Lightstar Renewables, as previously alluded to, operates in the New, in the Northeast. As it relates to the state of New Jersey, we're developing three projects at a sum to roughly 10 megawatts. And have a sizable portfolio in development in the state of New York and a few other markets across the United States. You could say that the, the bulk of the work that we've done historically has been in, in the state of New York, but are quite active in the state of New Jersey.
How many years have they been in business?
Lightstar Renewables, which I believe, a very, not long after New Jersey Solar was, came into existence, but the company was officially formed in October of 2019. However, it emerged from, from a, a previous entity that had been in business since 2015.
That, that previous business?
That business merged with a, a private equity group based out of Chicago, Magnet Capital. And, and that is when Lightstar Renewables became Lightstar Renewables.
How many projects has Lightstar and its predecessors been involved, approximately?
The current portfolio of, of projects that are in some stage of development is roughly 227 megawatts. You know, given that the, the company is, is relatively young, I would point to the combined experience of the professionals that make up the company. The combined experience of those professionals is, you know, close to a gigawatt of, of projects that have been developed, you know, over the last 10, 15 years.
Okay. And would New Jersey Solar be a tenant on the property on Casino Drive?
That is correct.
Why did you choose this location?
One of the primary factors or variables that goes into our consideration when we're citing renewable energy projects of this nature is it's, it's relation to the grid, to the electricity, the existing infrastructure. So in this case, that's Jersey Central Power and Light, as I'm sure you guys all are, are very familiar with. In, in, in going about testing the feasibility of this project, one of the, or of, of any project, really the, the first thing that we do, or one of the first things that we do is to, is, is to gain knowledge on the capacity, the existing capacity on the distribution, the local distribution grid. What, one variable that makes this project particularly viable is that there is sufficient capacity for the exact project size that we seek to develop at 663 Casino Drive, which, which checks this, this major box of the project being both physically and economically viable as it relates to the existing grid. The other conditions that are, are being met here are that, you know, a good, a good solar project, you know, depending on who you ask, but I, I would say that a lot of people share the perspective that a good solar project is, is not overwhelmingly visible. And, and this project does a particularly good job of not being overwhelmingly visible. It's, it's tucked away, if you will. And in addition to that, it meets some, some basic standards, some, some what you could call, you know, basic benchmarks for, for, for a project that we're willing to, to pursue as it relates to the regulations of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, both the construction feasibility, species consideration, et cetera. This is a relatively flat parcel of land. There are not any known significant impacts to wildlife. We're not going to disturb any wetlands. It's what we would consider a, a pretty clean project. And, and, and that's why we're here today.
Okay. Can you describe the nature of the solar farm system?
Yes, at, at a, at a general level, without getting too deep in the weeds here, a photovoltaic solar array produces energy by collecting sunlight or, or photons. And as photons pass through this semiconductor material in the, in the solar cell, they excite electrons which jump across what is called a PN junction and create current. So current, this is, this is specifically direct current. Direct current is produced by, by the panel from this natural phenomenon of photons interacting with the silicon. And that direct current is then sent to inverters to convert the direct current into alternating current, which is what our grid runs on. So we, we take this direct current, convert it into alternating current, and send it to the grid to be used by local homes and businesses.
All right, so you said this would produce 4.1 megawatts?
So the DC system size of this project is 4.1 megawatts DC. And the AC system size is 3.2 megawatts AC. And the power that's.
Can you translate that into how many homes that would power?
Certainly. So in the first year of production, we estimate that this project would produce, will produce roughly 6.2 million kilowatt hours, which would power roughly 700 local homes for, for the year.
And then how it's from the farm, how is the system then connected to the electric grid?
So the, the solar farm ultimately interconnects at what's called a, a POI, a point of interconnection to the, the JCPNL distribution grid, which interconnects at a 13.2 kilovolt distribution line. And then, and then that power ultimately travels to, to the local substation and is the, is thereafter distributed to, to local homes and businesses.
And how did you determine that the system can accommodate this power?
We, we've done several interconnection feasibility studies with various entities, both PJM, which is the, the larger ISO for the, the mid-Atlantic region, as well as an impact study with Jersey Central Power and Light. In, in the beginning of, of, of a project in New Jersey, you have some indication of, of, of what, how much capacity is there, there is going to be and what the, the impact of the project is going to be on the local distribution grid. But you do not have real certainty of what that impact is going to be until you've gone through the various impact and feasibility studies. So we, we went through an impact study with PJM and we went through an impact study with JCPNL. Actually, we, we get our final impact study results back from, from JCPNL. They were supposed to come today, but I expect that they'll, they'll come tomorrow.
And Exhibit A13 that was submitted, the feasibility report?
Yes. So in the beginning of, I, I guess to take a step back, New Jersey has been in the process of, of incentivizing, you know, specific type of solar project, many specific types of solar projects. When, when this project first sought to participate in New Jersey BPU programs, it was not determined how, what that program would be, what, you know, how it would be structured and what the requirements of the program would be. So without that knowledge, it seemed sensible to, to do a J, a PJM impact study. So we performed that study. The results came back very favorably. The grid can, can in fact accommodate this project and at a, at a cost that is, that is feasible, that, that does not put the project underwater. Now that the program description has matured in the state of, in, in New Jersey through New Jersey BPU and is specifically a community solar program that this project seeks to participate in, we went back to JCPNL and, and redid our impact study as a, specifically a community solar project. And that's the, the impact study that will be completed. You know, was supposed to have been completed today, is likely, we'll, we'll, we'll get the results for tomorrow.
So could the grid take on a larger power input than what's produced from this farm?
Judging by both the public data that JCPNL provides and reviewing the results of the PJM study, the, the system size that we've chosen, which is measured on, on AC as it relates to the grid, so 3.2 megawatts AC is maxing, is maxing out the available capacity. So to answer your question more simply, no.
Can you describe what happens, what operations happen on site with respect to the panels?
There's, solar projects have any, any, basically two types of configurations. There are either fixed, fixed tilt, where the, the panels are oriented to the south. And as the sun passes from sundown, sunup to sundown and the sun moves east to west, those, those panels are in fixed place and collect the sun as, as the sun moves across the horizon. Our current configuration is, is for a fixed tilt system. Now, it is possible that, under the same exact footprint and very similar design, that we would reorient the, the rows of panels to run north, south, and in fact have the panels on a single axis tracker tracking the sun from east to west, which is actually, we're, we're kind of at this inflection point where the cost of, the additional cost of, of a system like that, which of course has, 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 has more parts to it, is, is cost effective enough to inspire wanting to, to get that additional efficiency, that additional yield from the sun where you're tracking the panels, the panels are tracking the sun from east to west, producing quite a bit more annual electricity, which, you know, when we think about energy generation, generally, we want to get as much energy production from a facility, from any amount of space as, as possible. If we're, so let's use the, the footprint that we have and, and produce more energy with it.
Now, real quick, I got, I got a question for you. Okay.
Certainly.
Do, do you know what you're gonna do at this point or? what you're gonna do at this point, or is that still up in the air? Are you gonna, because that, that's part of this application.
Right. So I would say for the time being.
No time being, we need to know facts. What, what, what's going there?
I would say that okay, we, we're, we're going to move in the direction of, of.
It's not moving, sir, it's not moving in a direction. I need to, we need to know. When we vote on this, we need to know what we're getting, period. It, it, it's, it's no matter, you know, i- i- there, there's one way or the other, i- i- you know, i- if you're not ready to move forward with this application, don't move forward. But if, if you know what you're putting in there, we need to know that. It, it's not one way or the other. We're, we're, and we're not going to sit here tonight and design this application. We're not going to do it. You know, you, what you're, what you're putting in or not.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I have a, I have a quick question if I may. I'm, I'm just curious if the moving panels, if that makes any sound. We're significant sound. Okay. All right. I'm sorry.
We're gonna get, yes.
Thank you. But, um.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You know, there's a lot that talks about the ISO, P S E and G and New Jersey Central Power and Light. You know, are they, you know, they seem to be the partner here, right? Are they going to be testifying?
Well, they're not the partner, they're the recipient.
Well, I, I guess the, I guess where Mr. Say is kind of going is, you know, we're saying we're relying on a report that's to be issued tomorrow that says that the grid has a certain capacity to it. And we're saying there's a difference in the capacity that can be generated for fixed solar panels in just the northerly orientation versus ones that rotate to track east to west. If the report comes in tomorrow that says that the grid then has, you know, ten megawatt AC capacity, like, are we going to see a change in the orientation of the panels where it's now, you know, east, west to give additional capacity, you know, uh, output from, from, from the site orientation? I think that's kind of along the lines of what Mr. Say's concern is.
And al- also Charlie, also Charlie, hold on, hold on. Look, we're, 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 we're not lemons here, right? We know that we lost Indian Point. We know we lost Oyster Creek. We know that offshore power through wind is what's being proposed to make up for the lost Oyster Creek on the grid using, just to your terms, Sam, the grid, right? We know we got the connection points and that makes the optimum sense to put that that, that wind power in to backfeed the grid. Um, how is that going to affect you coming and feeding the grid from up in central New Jersey here? And where is it going to clash, right? Is load balancing and everything else? Um, you know, we don't want to, th- this is an overall arching energy security plan for the state of New Jersey, BPU is involved. You know, it's not just, we're gonna, like Mr. Chairman says, we're not just going to develop something here and throw it in there and then it causes problems, right?
Right, and that's, that's. If I may, and just to further what Mr. Say is saying, I also think there needs to be some assessment when you're talking about the overall benefit to the grid. You know, it, there has to be some kind of circumference or some kind of radius within this region, right? Central Jersey, which is kind of what Paul is referring to, that could potentially, you know, provide whatever power to the grid and whether it's isolated to this particular area, if it's Howell in its entirety, if it's Monmouth County, because, you know, you're here for a use variance and, you know, being located at this particular location, regardless of whether or not you're, like, we have not yet gotten to their inherently beneficial or not, but whether or not, you know, cutting down fifteen acres of trees in central Howell is necessary to provide this benefit to the grid or if there is a radius that encompasses the sixty-four square mile township that has open farm fields, maybe not at this location, could provide the same benefit. I think the board is going to need to know that information as well.
Mr. Chair, also just was wondering, are they going to ever come back and ask to enlarge this area?
We can, we can't know that.
No, but this, what's his opinion? What's Sam's opinion? Will you, is that, will you come back to look to enlarge this area at some point?
No, so, and, and just to also go back to one of the original questions that, that came up here. Um, the, the system size is, is not going to change. Regar- you know, I, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you right now that the, the design that we'll, we'll move forward with is a single access tracking system. And that, the system size that I've been talking about from the beginning of the meeting, saying four point, four point one megawatts DC and three point two megawatts AC will not change. The footprint of this project will not change. The system size that I'm, that I'm, I'm telling you is going to be, is, is going to be and that will never change.
Okay.
And, and I think that one thing that we want to, to make evident here is that there's, you know, there's all sorts of, of, of different types of, of energy projects that, you know, make it possible for us to, to plug in our computers here and, and, you know, flip the switches and have the lights come on. As we move towards an increasingly renewable based grid with intermittent resources and we continue to get more and more challenging storms that come up the eastern seaboard and, and compromise the resiliency of our grid. The most effective means of, of building resiliency in a grid like JCP and L's is to have distributed generation so that we do not rely on a single large source of power to power all the homes in, in the town of Howell. That in a portion of Howell, there's a solar project that is not dependent on that, you know, that, that single line that's carrying power to the town. So when, when that goes down, you know, there's, there's resiliency built into your grid because there is a local source of generation.
Okay, I, that's understandable. Uh, my next question would be, what is the longevity of these panels?
The, the panels are, are good for thirty years. And they become, they become less efficient over the course of their lives. They, they degrade at, you know, between one and one point five percent a year. It's not linear. Um, but, you know, when we decide that we're going to, to build a project, we, you know, we very closely model out that, that degradation and, um, you know, determine that the project is, is still a, a great project, producing a lot of energy for JCP and L and, and local, local homes and businesses, JCP and L customers. Um, you know, in, in the, in the twenty-fifth year of, of that project.
Okay, now what happens to the panels uh, in, in twenty-five years? Are they recyclable?
So there's a, this is, this is something that is, is kind of being developed as we speak, you know, panel recycling. Um, and there's a couple really cool companies that are, that are getting into that space and repurposing panels and, and, you know, finding new use cases for those materials. Because of course, you know, as, as the state and the country and, and the world builds more solar projects, these, these panels need to, to find a use case at the end of what we're calling their, their useful life for, for this project. Um, but the project will, you know, will be fully decommissioned at the end of, of, of the project life and, and ultimately be recycled.
Okay, now the project being, who, who will be responsible for that?
New Jersey Solar Two Thousand LLC.
Okay, twenty-five years from now, they're going to be responsible. What happens if something happens that this totally has to be decommissioned? Who, who's going to pay for that decommissioning and him returning the site back to what it is today? Well, I, I know it won't ever be what it is today, but who, who decommissions that? Who's in charge of that?
We do.
Applicant.
Yeah, but, you know, in twenty-five years, what's going to get, what kind of guarantee that you're going to be around in twenty-five years?
The guarantee is that we're a very financially sound company.
Well, there's a lot of companies that's been financially sound and they're not around in twenty-five years. What, what protection does a township have? And if this is going to be decommissioned, the, the township is not going to get stuck decommissioning something or the state. Now, what, what kind of guarantee is there for that?
I would, I would say that our, I mean, our company will be responsible for decommissioning the project. Like, of course, we have no plan of, of going out of business, but any, any entity that would, you know, let's run a hypothetical here that our, something disastrous happens and the company goes out of business and, and, but ultimately you have this valuable asset that's in the ground. And, you know, we're, we're unloading assets because it's, um, because the, the company's no longer financially viable. Whomever would purchase that asset from us would be, would, would, would take on the responsibility of decommissioning the project.
Hey, hey, Sam? So we're talking about, we're talking about Lightstar Renewables LLC out of Albany?
Um, no, we're based out of Boston.
Okay.
And we're backed by, um, as I, I mentioned earlier on the call, um, a private equity group out of Chicago, which, um, is a, 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 a big shop um, with a, a significant energy infrastructure, uh, fund that is partnered with a number of, of renewable energy companies and we're part of that portfolio. And so, you know, this is a, a fifteen billion dollar asset base at this private equity group. Um, yeah, I can't make, I can't make a, you know, a, a, a complete promise here, but we're, we're going to be around.
Where, where else do you have these farms in, in, mostly New York and in the what, northeast?
That's correct.
Looking forward to seeing diagrams. I don't believe we've seen anything yet.
Oh. You can go.
Okay, um, yeah, we've, we've got, um, you know, a, a, a long list of, of materials that have been provided to, to the board, um, with our, 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 our permitting design, um, that shows, shows those diagrams that you're looking for.
Mr. Mr. Bailey, I have, I have just a quick question along the lines of decommissioning. So, uh, is there any possibility, obviously you're the applicant and there's a separate owner to the property? You know, hypothetically, if Lightstar Renewables, NJ Solar were to go out of business, is there any possibility that the de-commissioning responsibility would then revert back to the owner of the property?
It's a, it's, it's built into the, the lease option agreement that we have with the owner, um, that, you know, no matter what, that the responsibility of decommissioning the project falls on Lightstar Renewables.
And hypothetically, if they were to go out of business, is there any like third-party insurance or anything that would cover the municipality and, 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 you know, uh, or the, the property owner in the event that they went out of business to make sure that that still got, you know, done.
Let me ask the question. In other projects, have you provided bonds to the municipality for the performance of the decommissioning?
We most certainly have.
So we can make that a condition.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I can go back to, uh, um, so let's talk about the impacts of the, of the project. Um, one of the board members asked about noise, what kind of noise would be generated? Um, if the panels are not fixed, if the panels that are tilting, what kind of noise would be generated?
The, the noise from a, a single access tracker is, is negligible. It's, it's.
I just have to ask the question, are you a certified noise expert?
No.
I'm, I am not.
No, I mean, I mean, this is a use variance application and, and noise impacts are something that the board typically asks for. And you certainly can answer the question as a layperson, but if the board is concerned about noise, it's going to be something, eh, you know, that we are going to expect expert testimony on. And we have required that in the past.
That's, that's understandable. Um, I think that it's, it's well-known across the industry because these, these studies have been done, um, by the noise experts that you speak of, that the, the inverters on these projects produce about twenty-five DVA and that's similar to an industrial refrigerator.
So are you going to submit that kind of report to us?
If that, if it is the desire of, of the board that we do, we.
So I'm thinking based on their nodding heads, the answer is yes. And then I would be expecting that whoever prepares said report would be available for the board to ask questions of.
I would say that that's something we can do.
Great.
Um, what kind of other, let's talk about other impacts. Will there be glare or heat generated by the, by the panels?
So the, the project is, is ultimately screened on all four sides of, of the project. It's, it's surrounded by trees. Um, so glare from, um, from ground level is, is kind of a non-starter. Um, as it relates to glare from a bird's eye view, um, we registered this project, um, or evaluated this project with the FAA's notice criteria tool um, to see if there would be any impact, um, from the panels on, you know, flight paths, et cetera. And the determine, the determination came back negative that there was, uh, that we did not exceed the, the notice criteria. Um, and, and that's, that's using the, the FAA's, uh, tool to do so. Also.
Did the FAA, uh, release a report on that? Do you have that?
So, because I, I can provide the, the results of that for you. Um, if you.
Who did the result? Who did the report?
Uh, the, how it works is you go onto the FAA's website, um, you plug in the details of the project. It's, um, it's a exact location, lat-long, uh, height of the panels. Um, and, and then you, you process the, it processes their, you know, their algorithm processes the information and maps out all of the, the flight paths that are, that are in that area and determines, determines whether you exceed their notice criteria or you don't exceed the notice criteria. And when you exceed the notice criteria, that's when you do a FAA glint glare analysis. We did not exceed the criteria and therefore are not required to do a, a glint glare analysis.
Okay, do, do we have any? Okay, I, I, Charlie, you can jump in any second.
I, I didn't see any report to that effect in, included in any of the, uh, analysis. And to be perfectly honest with you, that's the first time that I've ever heard of a glint care, glare analysis. Uh, but if they said they did it, I'm sure that they could provide it for the board's record and review if, if so desired.
Certainly. Also, these panels are, are inherently designed to, to capture light, uh, and not to reflect them. Um, you know, they, the technology is built to, to capture as much of that light as possible.
Mister Bailey, to that, to that point, so I know, um, you know, we're talking about the single axis with the swivel, the, to capture the sun east, east to west. The current site orientation, site plan with limited clearing, is there any changing to additional tree clearing that would be required to, to mitigate any shading effects, uh, to accommodate that orientation or has that already been included in, in the analysis? So, you know, there's pretty mature, sizable vegetation that's out there. I think, uh, you know, the board just wants to know if there's additional tree clearing that could potentially be required with the, you know, uh, different configuration, I guess, per se.
The, the tree clearing that we've established now will not change.
Approximately, how many acres of clearing?
Uh, I have this in front of me. I think it's approximately ten acres.
Sure, I think it's closer to eleven.
We've covered it in our Woodlands management report.
So I think the reason why Charlie's asking that question is that this is not the first solar array that we have encountered here in town. And every other solar array has kind of over cleared to ensure no shadow, as I'm sure you're gonna provide us, that, you know, any kind of shadow cast on the array from vegetation, and this is a very mature, like, stand of trees that are in excess. I don't know what cherry, like sixty feet high, those trees. So, you know, that I think is why Charlie's asking, because in every other instance, we have had applicants assure us that the fence line is the fence line, but they need to clear beyond it because they can't risk having any kind of like shadow or shading. So are you a hundred percent sure that this is the extent of clearing that you need? Because if that's what it is, it's gonna be very, very clear in any resolution. And anything beyond that is going to be not taken kindly by the township if you're looking to clear later.
That's, that's fully understood and, um, we're sensitive to that in that the we've, the tree clearing that we've established is what we base our, our, our irradiance modeling from. You know, we, we specifically design to to the confines of, of what we're looking at right now. So the, the yield that we expect to get from this project with the existing clearing is the yield that we're committed to moving forward with. So the exposure, yep.
You know, I've been on the, I was on the shade tree. I, I don't know, maybe a dozen of more years. Um, you know, the tree canopy has been slowly but surely evaporating in Monmouth County. Uh, the USDA Forestry Service continually, you know, pounds us for lack of tree canopy and the erosion and the effect it has on our ecosystem and our stormwater and everything else involved. You know, you're, you're coming from one side of the spectrum and we're looking at it from another side of the spectrum. You know, what are you gonna do to mitigate and repair the tree canopy that you propose on clearing?
Well, as it relates to, to stormwater, we're, we're putting in twales and stormwater basins to, to protect from changes in, in the runoff. Um, and then as it relates to the removal of the trees and, and offsetting that, um, we were prepared to pay into the town's tree fund, um, to, to fund tree replacement.
See, my, here's my problem. And, you know, I, I don't know if you can move this somewhere on this site to where you don't have to clean, clear out so many trees. But this, this is an old forest. You know, the, these are old trees. They're, they're not, you know, the, this canopy there has been there for a very, I've been here thirty years. And that, that's been wooded the whole thirty years, you know? And some of those trees I've watched from time they were small to where they're, they're giants now. And, you know, we're not gonna get that back. There's, there's no way that can be replaced, not in our lifetime, probably not in my kid's lifetime. And, you know, that, that's, you know, that, that's a mature forest that you're gonna take down, ten acres of here in Howell. And, you know, with the development and everything else that's going on here, you know, we're gonna look real hard at that. You know, the, the canopy and, you know, what, what we have there. You know, i- it's not for nothing, you know, I, ten acres is, that's a lot of, to a forest, that's a lot of acreage. And, you know, I.
Clearcutting.
It, yeah, it's almost eleven acres. And Wendell, one of the, I went on the site. It's actually a really nice piece of wood. It's not just by the deer. There's a real understory in this wood. There's, you know, plants that I don't always see because usually they're demolished by, you know, our, our overpopulated deer herd. Um, th- there's actually really, you know, nice variety of plant material out there, uh, which is creating a lot of habitat. It's not just stormwater, you know, that's a concern. This habitat for all sorts of wildlife and migrating birds as well.
So, so Charlie?
Yes.
How did you let something like this come to, before us, huh? Um, bottom line upfront, I'm, I'm teasing you, of course. But Charlie, you know, I've seen solar panel arrays here in New Jersey properly laid out, properly installed, you know, for the grid. Many of those sites, they put up poles and they carry the juice from the inverters to the grid where it needs to be inserted. You know, just choosing this site because that's where the connection is is not necessarily palatable when you're talking about clearcutting, you know, eleven acres of, of woodlands, when you have so much open land where you can install these and carry that array through lines to the, to the infrastructure. And that's kind of, you know, what's souring me right at the moment. So, uh, help me out here.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not my favorite part of the job. Um, no one, no one wants to cut down trees. But the state has a goal of getting a certain number of megawatts of distributed generation solar because they want to do their part on decarbonizing the grid.
So I guess the question becomes, how many other sites in Howell did you investigate? And were any of those sites cleared farm fields? Because let's be clear, we have plenty of those. So how many sites in Howell did you look at before you came upon this location?
I personally did not do the, the site acquisition for, for this project. I can't, I can't speak to how many sites we looked at. What I can speak to is that I've looked at the interconnection map in, in, in the town of Howell, in the county of Mama, and there's very limited, a very limited number of places where you can interconnect a distributed generation solar project.
So the sites that we have seen here in Monmouth County, Howell, in the northern section of town on farm fields that have been cleared, which are probably what, a couple miles from here, but in the same general area? Would that fall within the same, in the same grid? Because we haven't seen this quote-unquote interconnection map. So I would say, based upon the feedback that I'm gleaning from my board members, is that we're gonna need to hear from whomever did the site acquisition as to all the sites they evaluated and how you landed upon this location, um, as well as other sites available within the general vicinity that perhaps would not require the clear cutting of eleven acres of, I don't know, like, very significant, I mean, would you call it significant forest areas, Sherry? Is that how you would categorize it? Um, yeah. You know, I mean, we haven't even gotten to access and drainage, which I'm sure are gonna become, you know, gonna come up later, probably not this evening. But I think the board is interested to know how many other sites in the general area you evaluated and how you landed upon this, hopefully not based upon the cost of the property. Because we can't evaluate that and there are significant concerns over the impact associated with clearcutting eleven acres of, you know, aged forest versus finding a farm a, a mile away. So, I mean, I don't know how you feel about moving forward this farther than that, the, this evening, Mister Chair, but I do think that those are questions that the board is gonna need to know. And I don't know if it's worthwhile to continue tonight without having that information.
So, and Mister Chair, just to add on to that, and, you know, Sherry made a comment too about the condition of the forest and how it's, you know, seems to be thriving and prominent for, you know, uh, available habitat for, for wildlife. Um, the applicant did submit an NRI slash EIR partial, almost a waiver statement. They did indicate they did some IPACT, uh, inquiry regarding, um, you know, T and E, uh, threatened endangered species, you know, on the property. Also looked at the landscape mapping for, um, uh, for endangered, threatened, threatened, uh, species. Uh, two of the, two of the species they indicated were typical to wetlands habitat. So they indicated, you know, they're observing all wetlands and buffers, so they didn't anticipate any impact to that. However, there was, I believe, a bat, um, species, and then also, um, a mapped uh, possibility of bobcat habitat. And I just, you know, there was, there was indications in the statements and some of the recent submissions that they would adhere to some timer restrictions as regarding to impact to, to like the bat, um, habitat. I'm just wondering if they actually performed any T and E survey for the property to, to determine whether or not there is like that habitat on the site. You know, it's kind of, um, you know, just to say, we're not gonna impact it because we're gonna operate out of their, their, their mating season is one thing. I'm just wondering, you know, if this is a thriving habitat for bat and other, other species, are we now, you know, severely impacting that by clearing eleven acres of, of habitat?
Well, we did. And the engineer will speak to that. We did an actual habitat study and the engineer will speak to that.
Okay.
And we did not identify, we didn't identify critical animal habitat.
Mister Chairman.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to follow up with what our planner said. I, I mean, I really don't know why we're gonna go further with this without getting a little bit of a reply on where these other sites and how, which makes so much more sense. I mean, we're, we're talking not just small trees, these are mature trees. And the cost, um, that this applicant's going through is, it's, it's, it's mind-boggling to think, you know, they have to clear it just for this panels, but also for the, uh, to avoid the shading. And this is, uh, this is a considerable amount. And I agree with everybody who's spoken about this so far.
Well, we are proceeding with a specific project on a specific site. Uh, we are going to address the questions and the concerns that are raised. But this property can be developed for residential use, which will involve tree clearing. Um, we are presenting an application for this property and this project, um, that we've reached an agreement with the owner of the property for this development. And we're gonna proceed and answer your questions. Mister. We're not through with this. We have engineer, engineering and planning testimony.
But yet.
And we will come, when we come back, we will address the reports and.
Respectfully, I think that the board has asked a significant number of questions to which you have had no answers thus far. So I think.
Well, we haven't got a chance to answer them.
Mister Furser, I, I, I'm, I'm speaking that the board is asking for this information now. They're not waiting for it later. So I, you know, and, and to, to, with all due respect, it's the board chair's disposition on how the board proceeds, not yours. And if the board feels that this information is essential prior to hearing any testimony, and let's be honest, we're gonna have to come back anyway because you don't have an AICP. So one would say that, you know, perhaps, and I, and I would defer to the chairman, but if this is information that they feel is critical before they even get to the next step of things, you know, that's their disposition. So I, I would refer to the chair.
Mister Chair?
We.
Yes.
You, 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 you know, for the last twenty-five years, clearcutting has been our, you know, been, been our, it's, it's been our problem, right? And Mister Furser is making it like it's not, 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 no, no problem whatsoever. We're gonna clear cut. If, if it was residential, we would preserve what we could preserve when it comes to tree canopy and replace what needs to be done through Woodlands Management and landscaping and so forth. In this case, this is no different than when we've been in court many times for clearcutting. And, you know, now that we're mature and we've been in this town, representing this town and its land use, and, you know, I'm kind of concerned that this is being shoved aside because once again, the point I'm trying to make is we've seen these panels in other towns distributed via tall poles, long lines, and they bring it to the interconnection grid. And everyone's making, it is discounting the fact that because the grid is there and that's where they're gonna in-connect, interconnect, that that's the site that has to be done, you know, clear cut. I don't know, I, I don't see it as, you know, compelling. I, I am not, we are not discounting the town's concern.
May I have the opportunity to, to answer these questions?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, when, when we go about citing, citing projects, um, as I, as I mentioned earlier, we are, we're, we're very much bound by interconnection capacity. All, all renewable energy or energy period projects are, are bound by that. It's what either makes a project viable or not viable. And so when we, when we identify a point on the grid that's viable, we, we go about doing as much outreach to a town as possible. It's in our best interest to, to try to speak to as many landowners with different types of sites and sites that, um, that we can have meet the highest level of criteria as possible. And, and then we, we work from that, that list of sites. We work with those landowners. Some of those landowners are, are interested. Some of those landowners are not interested. In the case of, of this project, we're working with the Beanstalk family and.
Did you not just say five minutes ago that you were not involved at all in the land acquisition part of this project?
We use this, we, we approach.
Yes or no?
That's correct. I, I was not part of the origin.
He personally was not, but the company was.
Understandable.
He can speak as to what the company did.
Respectfully, when we asked him questions about where other sites considered, he, he deferred it. So now all of a sudden, he's intimately familiar with it?
May I?
I don't think I am.
No.
May I answer the question again, please? We've saw, we follow this, we follow, as a company, we're formulaic, right? We, we approach things.
What, what I wanna know and what I want my board to know is how many other sites around this area did you look at? What, was there any other sites? You deferred that earlier is you weren't involved with that. That's what we wanna know. We wanna know who else was approached about this. How, how far, what their actual site looks like, uh, on the other ones that have been approached? You know, you're taking ten acres, eleven acres of trees out of our township. That, that, that's what you're proposing to do. You're gonna take eleven acres of trees, mature trees. It, it's not like it's just ratty trees out there and, and, in the forest is, is, you know, just so much undergrowth in the earth, that, you know, yeah, you would be doing us a favor to take out. This is mature. This is mature trees. This is a nice forest. And it, it's going to be gone. We're not going to be able to replace it. Yes, you said there was bats. We're going to need testimony, and I know you'd said that you're going to have the engineer testify to that, but, you know, whenever you take 11 acres away, those bats use those trees to, to, to do whatever they're going to do, they're gone. What happens to the bats? You know, that, that, that's the information that we're going to need to know, but you've taken 11 acres. You need to have the backup for us to approve something. We're going to need that backup. We're going to need to know what else you looked around. Was there other properties around that were, were investigated that, that would be more suitable to, in, instead of cutting down 11 acres of trees?
And typically that testimony is not provided to us by an engineer. It's provided to us by an environmental scientist who has done the evaluation. That is something that this board has also routinely required, that somebody who prepared an EIS, who is qualified to prepare an EIS, who has evaluated habitat and, and, and threatened endangered species. It is not something that we typically allow testimony from an engineer. It's typically provided to us by an environmental professional.
Exactly, Jennifer. In most of all of our cell, cell tower cases that we've heard, I've been on the board over 20 years. All our cell towers, we've required any, any habitat had to be testified to by an environmental habitat person.
And we, we'd be more than happy to provide that testimony. And as it relates to the process that was undertaken for searching for a site to develop a project in your town, we'll put that information together for you as well.
Yeah, we, we do need that. You know, for us to grant an approval to clear out 11 acres, you know, I, I want to know what you did to prove that this was the last site that you've got to, to move forward with. You know, that, that's what we, we're going to have to, you know, because we're appointed people sitting on this board, and I know you probably testified before boards before, but we have been granted the, the privilege of listening to cases and, and doing our due diligence to be able to preserve our township. You know, we, most of us have been here for many, many, many years, not necessarily on the board, but we've lived in this township for many years. Our professionals have been involved with this township for a lot of years. My board professionals have, have been here for many years. And I, I mean, you know, that, we're, we're stewards of this township and that we've got to make our best decision. And whenever we get a case that comes in, it's going to be clearing a lot of acreage. And I, I know it doesn't sound like a lot of acreage. 11 acres is a lot of acreage. And, you know, we, we've really got to know, and we've really got to be good stewards to that and do our due diligence to make sure we make the right decision. And it, it's not just for us, it's for you guys too, the applicant. You know, because, you know, we all have to work together, but we, we've got to cross, cross every T and dot every I with this.
Absolutely understood. Absolutely understood. We've, we've met with the township professionals, the township professionals have been very forthcoming with their comments. We have addressed the comments that have been raised. We understand the concerns that have been raised tonight. We are going to come back and address them. Some of the items were first raised tonight. They were not in the completeness requirements for submission, though we did not have them today, but we are going to address them as they are raised by the board.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. First Furser, if I could just, I want to ask a clarifying question. I think it's important for the board's perspective. So I, I think in your, um, summary at the beginning, you indicated the tract area was just over 40 acres. Is that the summation of all the lots?
That is correct.
What was the layer area, what's the area of the lot 114? That's the bulk of the proposed development with the solar panels, so exclusive driveway access.
21 acres.
And we're proposing 11 acres of clearing on that property?
That's correct.
That's correct.
And I would just be curious for the board's perspective, what percentage of that 11 acres, the 11 acres, what percentage of the actual non-environmentally constrained portion of a lot is that?
The portion that's not wetlands?
Not wetlands, not stream corridor, not riparian, anything like that?
Um, I believe, I think our engineer can answer that.
Yeah, I'm not expecting to have the answer now. I just, you know, if we're going to come back for another meeting, I think that's something important for the board.
I believe, I believe the information's on the plans, uh, in the charts and the plans already, and, and our engineer can address that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we're going to need to have a site review. I'd like the committee to get together.
Okay.
Let's take a good look at this.
Okay.
And then I'd like to.
I, I think that'd be a very good idea. And then that way, you know, we, we can have our own board. You know, I, I know the site, you know, and I know a lot of the board members might know it, but might not know it. But, uh, yeah, I, I know the Beanstalk family, you know, we, we, we were all farms, so the, you know, I do know the site. And so, yeah, very much, I, I really agree.
And then I'd like to take, I'd like to take you to other sites that have solar systems and show you how far the transmission travels to the interconnection grid. Because what Sam is saying, you know, there's a loss and a degradation. You know, there's step up transformers and there's other things that can be done to move it along. And, uh, I'm a little concerned that that's being short sighted, that's all.
Anyway, yeah, uh, who's this, who's on the site?
Believe I am.
You want to set that up? You know, um.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, you and Mr. Cantor, and I, I think Mr. Rose goes on it, didn't he?
Correct. Yeah, it's the three of us.
Uh, go ahead and set that up and, you know, Eileen, we'll have to notify the property owners that they're going to do a site review.
Okay, sounds good.
It's the applicant, you know, everything will go through you, Mr. And, but yeah, that way, that way my board members, they'll have their report and then, you know, we can move forward with that.
Okay, I would, I would stress again that, um, Paul, I, I understand, I, I hear your concerns about viewing, um, other solar projects that have been able to successfully interconnect to the grid from, from great distances. Um, a project of this size does not have, cannot feasibly interconnect to, to the grid at, at great distances because of the exorbitant cost associated with doing so. The project would, will simply go underwater and, and a, and a project of, yeah, that's, you know, four megawatts DC simply will, will not be built. Um, it's, it's having proximity to the distribution grid is, is absolutely vital to this type of, of distributed generation. These, these ultimately these projects that provide resiliency to the grid and, and where it's required to, to build transmission infrastructure. That's, you know, that's a, an entire other impact that.
What I think is going to be essential then to satisfy Mr. Say's concern is the documentation that was asked for prior, which shows the, the circumference of area in which this distribution would be appropriate. Because I find it hard to believe that it's one site in a 64 square mile town. So I think it's incumbent upon you as the applicant to provide the board with the documentation to show this information, show this area, which we know, you know, this documentation exists to show the area in which could be developed in this manner to provide the same benefit that you're representing this project will provide. And maybe the sites in Northern Howell may fall outside that circumference, but we need to see what exactly it is within the township of Howell that can accommodate this demand. I, you know, it's, it's clearly not just one property. So I think that the board has expressed concern about the property and we need to see exactly what it is we're dealing with.
You have asked for it and we will provide it.
Great.
Okay, uh.
Continue.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, can, Mr. Bailey, can you talk about what type of personnel would be on site with this project?
Um, during the construction of the project, um, it would be a, a, you know, a construction crew that's, that's on site during the duration of the construction phase. And then once the project is, is, is live and is interconnected to the grid, um, there's, there's no one that's on site, um, on a day-to-day basis. And a crew, an operations and maintenance crew goes out to the site, um, on a, on a quarterly basis, um, sometimes more frequently than that. And also, um, in response to, to events such as a storm, um, or, or some type of, of, of outage where a portion of, of the project is, is not producing energy. Uh, we send out a, a crew that's, that's locally, um, that's, you know, within a certain proximity of, of the project and, and they go out to the site and perform maintenance on it.
Okay. And would this maintenance include inspection and maintenance of the detention basins?
It would.
And at what times of the day would these visits take place?
Um, they would take place between standard working hours, let's say 8:00 AM to, to 5:00 PM.
Okay. And is the system, how is the system monitored to see if there are any issues, if there are any problems?
The system is, is monitored with a, that what's called a DAS system, uh, which shows the, the live production of, um, of the project. So if, if all of a sudden the production drops, uh, precipitously and it's not in line with what we have modeled, we know that, you know, something's gone wrong. Uh, a string has, has, is, is broken and a portion of the project is, is not online or, um, something of that nature, and we immediately send out a, a crew to the site.
And, uh, after a storm, do you also send out, uh, inspection crews?
Yes, if the, if the storm, um, is, is considerable, then, then we'll send out a, a crew to the site.
Are there, uh, fire suppression systems for the panels?
There are not. Um, the, the project is in a contained area. Um, fires at, at these projects are, are rare. I know that, uh, the project that's in, in your town, uh, experienced a fire, which is once again extremely rare. Um, but the procedure is to, to let a fire burn out, um, and, but to ensure that throughout our ongoing operations and maintenance of the project, um, that all, all brushes is cleared, um, and that there's, there's not an opportunity for, for the fire to, to go anywhere.
Okay. Um, now, how is the, uh, project on lot 14 going to be accessed from Casino Drive?
Um, it's, it's going to be accessed from, from Casino Drive, um, that the, the access road that is on, that, that begins on Casino Drive and runs up to lot 114, um, is going to, you know, be upgraded in, in some areas to meet the requirements of, of the fire chief, our, our engineer will, will speak to this later. Um, and, and we'll, we'll provide the, the access for both the O and M crew, um, and potentially if there were to be a, a fire for, for the fire crew.
Right. To reiterate, will there be a deed at, um, a needed access easement for that?
Yes.
I'm going to ask, I was going to ask that. Um, so how is the access going to be secured?
So the access is, is secured from, from the easement that was just allus, alluded to.
Okay. And this covers, um, lots 114, 129, 130, 137, and 138, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What would happen if any of the lots, and the owner, the same owner owns all those lots? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And what would happen if any of the lots were sold?
The easement would, would carry.
Now, the professionals raised a concern about, you know, properties along the existing driveway. Um, did you, uh, uh, how, how are the, uh, property owners along the driveway protected?
The, uh, there's really just one property in question. It's the DePietro property, um, and there's an existing driveway access easement between the, the Beanstalks and the DePietros, um, which we have provided.
And who's going to maintain the driveway?
Uh, we will maintain the driveway, um, to ensure that it's clear for, for any O and M or emergency response that's required.
Okay. Now, when the project is terminated, can you explain, um, how the project's going to be decommissioned?
At decommissioning, um, we would bring a, a crew on site to remove all panels and racks, um, and to remove or to. Yes?
Well, continue.
I'll continue. Um, to remove all, all materials from the site, um, and in, including, uh, restoring the stormwater basins and swales, um, and ultimately returning the site to, um, to its original state as best as possible.
And, uh, exhibit A dash.
Have you, have you returned it back to its original state? Do you do any reforestation?
Um, it's something that we can, we can discuss. Um, we would, we would plant a, a pollinator mix of some sort, um, that would allow.
Perennials.
Excuse me?
Those are perennials.
Okay, um, we would do any planting, um, within reason that, that, that the town requested of us.
And you submitted, uh, exhibit A dash 15. Um, that's a, that explains the decommissioning process?
That's correct.
And is this, uh, obligation to decommission? Is this an obligation in the lease you have?
It is.
Um, and we also would agree to provide, is, we would also, would you also be agreeable to provide a bond if the town requests that?
We most certainly would.
I, I, I missed it. I, it, it, it's breaking in and out.
Sorry.
Do you mind repeating that last?
About the bond or about the?
Yeah, but I, I didn't get any of it. You know, all went blank.
Okay. Uh, right, we were talking about decommissioning.
Right.
Um, that we submitted a decommissioning report as exhibit A dash 15.
Okay.
And, uh, Sam, could you just explain the decommissioning process?
So I think that was not really a, fully addressed. I mean, Shari brought it up and it kind of, kind of got glossed over. So the site is now, hold on, the site is now a fully mature forest. So the testimony was that it will be restored to its original state. So therefore a reforestation plan would be required. That is something that would be required to be submitted now so that Shari can review it and make sure that upon decommissioning, the, the. the township would be in a position to reforest this location. Because right now, it's a fully matured 11-acre forest. You're clear-cutting it. So, yes.
What does it do to our green team numbers?
I don't know. I'd have to look into that.
That, you know, because we rely on that tree canopy to carry our score.
I understand that.
I mean, it's going to put us underwater.
I do understand that and it's something that I thought about. I just had not, I did not have a chance to evaluate that, but I will definitely do so before the next meeting. But just to go back to the decommissioning, like just a simple decommissioning plan of like unhooking and getting your equipment out of there is not something that we're going to be satisfied with. So in order to even, like, entertain this application, a reforestation plan needs to be prepared by somebody. I would advise a licensed landscape architect and they need to coordinate with Shari. That documentation needs to be provided to Shari for her review in advance of the next meeting. So that when the board asks her, "Are you satisfied with what the proposal is for decommissioning?", she's in a position to say yes. But it's not something we're just going to let hang out there.
No, and, you know, I would look to the direction of the town for precisely what you guys are looking for.
Okay. So I would encourage your professional to reach out to Shari, who's the certified tree expert of the township and both boards here in town. And she's responsible for all of our landscaping and reforestation. And they should coordinate with her, sooner the better, and make sure that what she's looking for is something that you're providing to us.
I agree.
Certainly. I'd like to just take one step back in that and just simply say that we want to work with the town and with the members of the board to meet your standards. We're not telling you what we're going to do. We're asking you for your input on how you want us to proceed with this type of project. And we want to work with the professionals, we want to work with your engineers to figure out how we can make the project as suitable as possible.
And I think the board understands that. I think the concern is over your site selection. So I think that, you know, this is not a permitted use, it's not an as-of-right use. And so evaluating the negative impacts associated with a use variance of this nature are something that this board evaluates very significantly. And I think you've heard very clearly that there's significant concern over the clear-cutting of 11 acres. And that in order for them to even entertain it, they're going to have to be convinced that this is the alternative that you're left with in order to tie in, as you've represented, et cetera. So I think that there's a lot of information that they still need in order to even kind of get over this hump of this location on Casino Drive, which is large lot, single-family residential, which, you know, is, this is a significantly wooded piece of property, as we've discussed. And the impacts associated with your project would be, in their opinion, significant. So, you know, I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, how you feel about continuing on, but I feel like there's a lot of information that we need to even feel comfortable at this point. So I would defer to you. But I feel, as the professional for the board, that there's a lot of information that I need to advise you, as I'm sure Charlie and Shari also need. So, you know, I would defer to you, Mr. Chair, as to, you know, how we proceed from here.
Yeah, Mr. Fisk, I think we ought to try to conclude right now for tonight. Let's find another date that we can come back and move forward with this, with the information. Because it's a lot of information that we do need. And I know I've seen you, you've been taking a lot of notes and I'm sure you'll address all our concerns. And I appreciate that. Mr. Bailey, I appreciate, you know, all of the testimony you've given. And, you know, let's stop it tonight at this point. Because I know, once you get into the information that we've requested, you know, some of your testimony might change a little different. You know, speaking, what I'm speaking of is gathering the information that we need. You know, that way you can more testify to what we're requesting. And, you know, I just feel, you know, pretty much right now, it might be redundant at a later date. You know, whenever we come back for the, you know, to conclude this application. So, Eileen, what's our schedule like? I would like to see if we can get a night to where this is the only application on, if we have a date like that.
Not for the rest of the year. December 6th, we have Donald DeCast and December 13th, we have Matthew Lynn.
Done. Oh, that was one of the ones from tonight, right?
On December 6th, Donald DeCast, yes. November 22nd, we have two applications on already.
Okay, DeCast might, well, first of all, how many, how much time are you going to need to gather the information we requested?
He's talking to you, Mr. Frisker.
I know, I know. Mr. Bailey.
No, I'm running the numbers. I think that we'd be able to gather that information within a couple of weeks' time.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, I want to add on to just, you know, if they're going to come back to the board and address some comments. I did issue a revised letter and apologize for not getting it out sooner. There were some stormwater information test bits that I asked for some clarification on. As far as the stormwater management for the site as a whole, I think they've addressed the lion's share of the comments and concerns that I had. The biggest one with the two basins is just, you know, they're putting a flat-bottomed basin in an area that's not flat. So they're excavating into water table potentially. So I think there might need to be some reconfiguration or retweaking of the grading to make sure that that's addressed. The other item that I indicated in my letter, the applicant, you know, at my request, did meet with a fire official in early September, you know, to hear his concerns regarding fire access from Casino Drive. I know he did bring up a question of whether or not the applicant looked into alternative emergency access from the NJ Transit property to the south. So if they can provide an update or any information on whether they looked into that further for the board's consideration, I think that would be helpful. Especially, I know there was a lot of testimony regarding this site is, you know, suited with, you know, the amount of canopy and vegetation surrounding it that kind of makes it secluded. You know, from a fire access perspective, if, you know, fire, God forbid, does happen back there, you know, how is a fire department going to know where the site is from Casino Drive? Is there any signage proposed? You know, there's, you know, there's two or three different driveways from the properties that, you know, are on Casino Drive. How do they know which driveway they're driving down to get back there? God forbid something happens.
Right.
And we've received and were prepared to address all those questions.
Yeah. And Mr. Bailey, let me ask Mr. Fisker. The bat information as far as environmental, are they going to be able to do something within two weeks and issue a report?
We would not be able to conduct a survey within two weeks to see if there's, in fact, a bat population that roosts in those woods. What we would typically do is we would clear outside of the roosting season.
Yeah, but you're not really understanding what I'm talking about. I know it's a roosting season, but they're there roosting. And you take out 11 acres, now they're not going to have a place to roost. You know, so that's the concern. And, you know, to have somebody... That's my concern, is, you know, you're taking a habitat away. You know, you're 11 acres and if that bat is there roosting, regardless of seasons of roost or anything, he's no longer going to have a habitat to roost in. That's the concern. And, you know, if we can get somebody to give us a report on that, that would be very helpful.
I know our engineer has, in response to the question that was raised by the engineer in this afternoon's amended report, our engineer was prepared to address that. I don't know that a full study is...
Is he an environmental, species environment person?
I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, you know. We're going to need somebody that does this with the bats.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I'd also like to remind Mr. Bailey that cost is not my concern. You know, and he said, well, it's cost prohibitive, but yet he's talking about contributing to the tree fund and talking about other things. I mean, and on one hand, he's saying it's cost prohibitive to do a transmission. And on the other hand, he's agreeing to everything else. So I'm confused.
Well, Mr. Say, we can't look at cost prohibitive.
Go ahead.
We can't look at that.
I know.
Mr. Chair, don't we need a report on the foliage that Jen was speaking about?
Yeah, Mr. Fisker has...
He has a special person come in and do that report?
Yeah, that's Shari and, you know, they've got to satisfy Shari on this.
And that's, you're speaking to the reforestation plan?
Yeah, the canopy and the reforestation, yes. Okay. So you think two weeks, Mr. Fisker, you'll be okay or...
If the board does not want to proceed with this conversation until we've done a survey on whether the Indiana bat roosts in those very woods, we'll need more than two weeks. I don't know that I can specifically commit to a date, given that we'll have to go out and, you know, ensure that our surveyor is available. But I would say that we can make this happen within a month.
Okay, let's do this, then, Mr. Fisker. Let's put you on the agenda for December 6th. Y'all figure out what kind of time you need. And then, you know, that way we don't have to do a renotice, bring you back on the December 6th. You can let us know.
I can't make December 6th. Can we make December 13th?
When's our... Eileen?
It's December 6th or December 13th?
Yeah, the 13th. If you can do it on the 13th, it'd be for scheduling purposes only. We won't take any testimony, but, you know, just for scheduling. And then now...
We can advise where we are and what we've submitted by that point and...
That way we can get a date and we'll probably be in person at the township, you know, after the new year, so...
So the question is, are we losing, are we losing any members we had tonight whose terms are expiring?
I'm, hopefully not. I'm not certain. I don't really know which members are even up at this point.
All I can say, Mr. Chair, is I'm up, but I did put in to hopefully get reappointed, so...
Hopefully, everybody gets reappointed. That's what we hope.
Okay. So I would ask the chair to announce this is carried to December 13th.
Okay. I've got all my writing on these. Okay, as far as... Still the wrong paper. Case number VA 20117, New Jersey Solar 2000 LLC will be carried to December 13th with no further notice for scheduling purposes only. Okay, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Fisk.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey. And I don't know if Mr. Lyons got his voice back, but, you know...
He's showing muted.
Just say, did you ask me something or no?
Mr. Lyons?
Can you hear me?
Oh, wow, there's voice. Thank you.
I've been raising my hand all time and taking it down, putting it back up, but because I got tired.
You'll be at the Rules Committee?
Yes.
Okay, we'll talk about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Yes, sir. Okay, I appreciate all the board members being here tonight. Thank you for your input. Is there any further business at the board? Other than we have the Rules Committee on the 29th. So, look forward to seeing everybody.
You got it. Is the Rules Committee open to members that are not on the Rules Committee since you're going to argue?
No, it's not. I wish it was, but it's not. It's, that's why they call it the Rules Committee and it's specifically in the bylaws that way.
I haven't seen you guys in two years, so, you know.
Well, yeah, I hear you.
Beginning of the new year, Glenn.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I'll talk to Eileen. Maybe we can see about doing something for a little holiday party or something.
We should.
Yes, do something at the cafeteria or something.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, it really would. You know, I miss everybody. You know, it's one thing looking at you on the computer screen, but it's another thing whenever we're all together.
We need some 3D representations of ourselves, right?
Okay, if there's no other business before the board, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Motion by Mr. Say.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Again, thank everybody for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you, Charlie, Jennifer, Mr. Cantor, Mr. Say, Shari, Mr. Martin, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Moretti, Mr. Tropley, Eileen, thank everybody, and Mr. Aguirre. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Take care.